Called me the board. What's the meeting? Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're in a different setup here for the first segment of the meeting. Can you call Rose please? Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Ms. Claude Selter?
Here.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
Colonel King?
Here.
Okay. Do we have any special guests down? Architect and construction manager, Ruth, update.
Evening everyone. Cory Miller on what they have to say. Quick update on the construction projects.
The Lawton High windows are wrapping up those. The Carrot Hills Thomason, Lawton High re-roofs, Adams re-roof, Woodland Hills Lincoln and Adams HBSC projects are all in the closeout, you know, review phase. We've got a couple punch list items and mostly just closeout documents, so aim to have those wrapped up this month. On the agenda later tonight, we've got a change order for Lawton High windows that returns the unused portion of contingency back to the owner by reducing the contract sum. For the multiple safe room buildings, we've got Hubish and Crawsy Park that just recently achieved substantial completion. We've got more to inspect starting Friday and the following Friday. We also have the Whittier Safe Room Building. Later on in the agenda, there's an action item for the GMP to be discussed, but we'll also introduce that under Crawson's report and answer any questions there. The furniture design for Eisenhower Middle School, we've got a 35% design review scheduled for this Friday with the district and staff over there at the middle school. The MacArthur High fire alarm upgrade, that contract was signed at the last board meeting. That sets the end of contract time to be October 31st. But I've been talking with the contractor, he's got his shop drawings into the city for permit review and he expects to have the main building finished during the summer, so far ahead of that anticipated length of the contract. Any questions over any of those buildings?
Thank you.
I have a comment. I told you, but anybody else involved, those safe rooms are awesome. And I was really, I was so excited and pleased.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Most agree.
All right, I'm going to hand you guys a handout from the status report that I've been promising everybody.
Thank you. Did you give one to Doug, Deegan?
Yeah. Did not give him one, but I do.
He's going to make you wait.
He's going to make you wait till the end.
All right, so moving forward for our board meetings, I'll be, we'll be providing one of these as well that'll kind of update everything and then it'll have some pictures as well for everyone to look at. Now, just going through each, each kind of item, the first little block here, we have the executive summary with the project highlights. That's where we're going to just kind of list off what I normally talk about, kind of where we're at in the project. So currently, right, our roofing is being installed in area D and C, so on the main gyms, they're starting to put down the installation and we're getting ready to get into the lightweight concrete. The roof curbs are being set on area D and C, so we can start getting units prepped. Our masonry continues in area C and B and they're also getting walls that are in kind of the gym, just wrapping up, wrapping up the gym and wrestling room area. And then concrete continues on area B as well, moving into the cafeteria and kind of coming down where the band, band's going to be. Moving on to the financial status, so that's your original GMP, that's how many owner contract, owner change orders that we've completed, that's the current contract amount. And then I went with the original contingency, what are the overall contingency was and what our current contingency is. Safety, so safety, this is our overall project safety numbers for hours worked and, you know, incidences, so currently we're doing really well there. The construction schedule, so our start date and completion date, I'll keep this updated as weather days kind of start, as they do affect us, it'll change the overall schedule. So we're currently overall 25 days behind, we're currently 45 days behind being dried in, or sorry, being, yeah, being dried in. Our targeted milestone dates, so these are dates that we've set when we started the projects, hey, we want to have concrete done on this date, we want to have the building dried in on this date. So this is what our milestones are to shoot for to make sure that we're meeting our construction schedule. And so those, those dates correlate with what we have. And whatever questions you have, or if you'd like to see something else on these, just let me know and I can manipulate these however, whatever you want to see on them. Percent complete, so this is based off of what our current GMP total is and our current build the date gives us our total percent complete of the project. And then our weather days is our actual weather days that we've experienced throughout since we've started breaking ground in October. And then any notes that I have that'll be pertinent that everyone needs to know. And then the, like I said, the, the next page will just be updated progress photos of what's currently going on, just to kind of show. And then we'll still try to stick to that three, or every other month, kind of, or do the drone and show some footage of it. Pending any questions, that's all I have for Eisenhower.
Does anybody have any questions?
It looks great. It's really exciting to see it come along.
My only thing is.
Yes, ma'am.
When these, your things come in, y'all have a tendency to put them all colored, you know, you shade things. But when they scan them in and we see them on our e-agenda, we can't see those that are, so can we not have them like colored for that when you give them to them to scan in originally? Can they not be colored?
Yeah, I can.
Because, I mean, they just come in so dark.
Right.
You can't see those pages.
All right, so are you talking, just so I'm kind of tracking.
Like that page turns dark gray.
Yeah, that'll turn dark.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
And like the second page that we have, I think in today's agenda that we got, that has, you know, gives us a breakdown and tells us.
Yes.
Everything, we can't read it on those.
So what I can do is just send a file, the, the original file to Kathy and then that way I can get.
Take the shading out.
If that's all right.
Yeah, not have any shading, yeah.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
The easiest thing they've ever asked you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to talk to safe rooms and then we'll talk to Whittier. On safe rooms right now, like Cory mentioned, we have five of them completed. We're punching the sixth one on Friday and the seventh one next Friday.
Is that substantial completion or completion?
Substantial completion.
Okay.
So we're still working the final punch list items on them, wrapping them up, so we're still on track to get everything done real quick, so. As far as the safe rooms, only we have a change order that's on the agenda for tonight for Soul and Village. There was some work inside the existing school that was not included in the original package, so our intent is to use the contingency to cover that. So that's in the agenda, I think it's an action item later on tonight.
It is.
So any questions on the safe rooms for going to Whittier? No, all right. So jumping into Whittier, I'm going to kind of do it like how we've done before in the past, kind of go over each trade package, if that's all right? And then, and then answer any questions afterwards if you want. So starting with the trade package 3A, which is the building in site concrete, we got three bids and the low bid was Luby Construction.
It's in here.
Yep, it's under.
Or is it? Hold on, just one second. We're under a whole different format, we don't know where our stuff is.
We may, we may wait, since this is an act.
7B.
Oh, there it is. Right there, Whittier Safe Room Project, 7B there.
Do you want to wait until we're actually on that 7B to go through this or?
No, I think it's okay. I mean, if y'all, if, since he's here, can we just go ahead?
Okay. Okay, so, so on trade package 3A, which is the building in site concrete, got three bids and Luby Construction was a low, we recommend them, them for this project. For the precast panels, Core Lab at Oklahoma City was low, again, we got three bids for that one as well and they're recommending them. Under 6A, which is the Millwork, we got one bid from Arnold Brothers Millwork for $19,080, or $19,090 and they were low, so we recommend them. Under 7A, we received two bids for the waterproofing and joint sealants. The low bid did not include everything, he only included one specific item, so we had to throw out his bid. And the next bid was from Waterproofers Inc. for $22,196.53 and they had everything covered in the package, so we recommend them for it. For trade contract 7B roofing, we got three bids and Brock's Roofing at $35,550 was low. For 8A door assemblies, we had two bids, Ryan Herring and Pepper Weatherford, and Pepper Weatherford was low, we recommend them for it. Under nine, or eight. Under nine, or 8B, the tornado storefronts, Ryan Herring, we got one bid, and it was from Ryan Herring for $50,885. We recommend them for that one. For nine, 9A, sorry, Tipperson Board Assemblies, we got two bids, and Southwest Drywall was a low on that one, at $70,247. For trade package 9B, which is flooring, we got two bids. The first bid was from Reese Flooring for $31,144 for both, and then the second bid was for, from Brian's Flooring, and they're at $34,000, so Reese Flooring would be the recommended. For painting and drywall, under 9D, we got three bids on that one, and Dennis Brown Paint is the low. We recommend him to do these, do Whittier. On 10B, this one's less than $5,000, so we'll, we'll buy the material ourselves on just signage. Jumping over to 10C, which is the protective walkways, canopies, we got two bids, and Oklahoma Canopies was the low, and we recommend them for it. Skipping over 12A, that one's less than five grand. For plumbing, we got one bid for plumbing from Pippin Brothers, and we recommend them for the project. For HVAC, trade package 23, we got three bids, and Casco Mechanical was low, and we recommend them for this work. For 26A, which is electrical, we got two bids, and Smith Dressler was a low at $45,500, and we recommend them for the project. And then for 27A, which is the communication, only got one bid from High Techtronics for $25,796, and we recommend them. Same thing with 28A with the fire alarm, High Techtronics was the only bid at $26,185. For the earthwork, we got two bids, and Luby Construction was a low for the earthwork on this one as well, so we recommend them for it. For 33B, which is all the utility work, we got one bid from Young Contracting for $83,000, and we recommend Young Contracting for this project. So going back to the, the front page, currently we're at, after all bids, we're sitting at There is a substantial portion of project reimbursables and contingency coming from the existing safe, multiple safe room project, that we ought to come back and be used for this project if we could, but that's where we're sitting right now. Are there any questions?
Do you want to describe a little bit about what we're doing there?
Yeah. As far as the project itself, yeah, so this Whittier Safe Rooms should sit on the northeast corner of the existing safe room. We had a couple unknowns that we clarified during the bidding phase. So, for example, the site utilities went up drastically because there's, there's a main sewer line that was running underneath the portables right now, and we can't build a building on top of the existing main lines, so we had to move it. So as part of the cost increase there was, we had to move that main line, the main sewer line. That's one of them. The other ones, we tried to forecast, you know, economy of scale, we're doing one safe room instead of seven, so the, it's, it's a little more expensive to get guys to do it, for one. With that, concrete went up substantially, and so did the earthwork. Both those jumped up in costs, just due to the market, everybody's busy, and people getting them to do the work. So the other one that we had was just tornado storefronts. We, we were notified of a price increase before we bid. We tried to anticipate that price increase with the budget, and it was more than what we were being told, so that's why there's that.
What's a tornado storefront? What is that?
So those three windows around this, on the exterior of the building?
Oh.
There's three of them, and those are the, those are the windows that we had a price increase in.
And it's going to be a two-room?
Yes, ma'am, it's going to be three-room. There'll be, there'll be two, very similar to what we have right now, it's just that bigger room, the single bigger room will be a library instead of a classroom. And then we added an additional door there for regress. So instead of just having one door, you have two, on the, on the bigger one.
So what are we thinking completion date wise?
Right now, we're showing around, if I remember correctly, around the middle to end of January-
Okay.
As of right now. And then if we, like, we should be able to, as it stands right now, get everybody moved in in December. The biggest portion hurdle that will be at the end is getting those portables, because we're going to, we've got to relocate portables, got to put two of them on the north side of the school, we've got to put another one on top of the American, the, all the states on the concrete pad. So we've got to move three portables there because they still have to occupy the classroom space. So once the project's done and the teachers move in, then we will go in and move the portables out of the way. And then that's what we're tracking us for after Christmas break timeframe.
Well, we just got one bid. Is there any reason for that? I mean, I don't understand.
We solicit and reach out to tons of vendors, for example, on the main safer, the seven of them, one had two bids for the tornado storefronts.
Okay.
And then it just, we reached out to the same people again. He was just so busy, the other guy that bid was second place last time, who's just, he's just swamped in Oklahoma City doing work between the convention center.
So they just don't want to do it?
A lot of them, a lot of them, and a lot of it, a lot of it is, we notify them the day of, we call and touch base with them, make sure there's no, you know, outstanding questions, and then come the next day, no one shows up, or one shows up, or sometimes three, so.
I know you guys whittle it down to us to make it really simple like this, which we appreciate, but like if somebody, if we hired somebody for, say, the safe room projects before, and they did not do a good job, or their price ended up going up substantially with change orders, do we document that somewhere so that we make sure to take that into account in the future? Or is it always just looking at the bid at the time for that project?
We, we look at the performance-
Okay.
And then we give the recommendation to you guys. So if, if it's a sub that we had continued issues with, that we could not resolve, and that was very toxic-
Yep.
Then we would say, yeah, they're a low bid, but we would recommend, and ultimately you guys make it for best in schools, so.
Yep.
Awesome. Great work. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And can I say the same thing to you? Can we not do shading?
Yes, ma'am. Well, easy, easy bids.
All right.
All right.
Thank you guys so much.
Before you leave real quick, when we actually put this together, when we were deciding how much we needed to put aside, Dr. Deegan helped me with this, we actually added in a little bit more because we knew that, we didn't know what the variables were with Whittier, am I correct?
I believe so, and that's just the variable, like Jacob said, when you're building six or seven at once, you get a bitter break on concrete and all this stuff. It's easier to bid for seven than it is for one single project. So it just, it's kind of a wild card.
Right. All right.
Do we need to go ahead and take action on this now?
Um, no, I don't think so.
The boards can go out of order if it wishes and go ahead and vote seven.
While he's here to answer the question.
While they're here, may as well.
Are you okay to go ahead and vote on 7B?
The order is up to the pleasure of the board.
Okay, do I have a-
May for approval.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, but I'm a rule follower, so I hate going out of order.
I did, I did, I'm the same way. I was like-
Sorry, why?
Thank you very much, guys.
At least Kathy has us, we're good.
Oh. Departmental reports?
Okay, under departmental reports, we have item 6A, which is the written reports, and if the board doesn't have any questions over those specifically, we'll move to item 6B. And Ms. Ellis has several policy items, 6B, 6C, I'll just hand them over to her. And, pardon me, I do want to mention, again, SPPPDC is responsible for putting forth a couple of these policies, and I think we're having at least one more next month, so again, I want to congratulate SPPPDC, which is under Ms. Ellis and Ms. Looper, David Irwin, they've done a great job, and we're going to have more policies in the next board meeting as well, so. They've been working hard.
One minute, Doc, Ms. Ellis, does anybody have any questions over the departmental reports that were written? Did anybody, before we move along? Okay, just wanted to make sure they had time to answer.
Good afternoon. I'm Barbara Ellis, Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations, and as he said, I have a few policies for you. On the first one, CFBB- E1, the application for the sanctioning, there isn't anything new added into this particular policy. It was rearranged so that it would be an easy read, easy fill for the persons filling in the application, so the only thing that we've actually done is made blocks of lines instead of single lines across.
May for approval.
Uh, Paul Roll.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
For the next policy, COG, the wellness policy, this has been definitely a labor of love. I want you to know that we've been working on this for a while, and I have some assistance, so if you have questions, I may defer to Ed Services in order to give some assistance for that. But this wellness policy is required by law, as it's stated, and we have definitely worked long and hard to get it into a verbiage that could be understood by all of our departments, as well as having a manual put together by the organizers in Ed Services, so that there is a manual that goes along with this to help implementation.
I really liked this policy. It had so many aspects to it, as you read through it, and what I really liked was the physical activity that had to be done by your elementary students, and that the fact that they couldn't actually choose, the punishment is being you can't have recess, you know, they had to find other ways, and I thought that was really good, because I've been a child that's not acting, that's acting up, that if you put them on the wall, which is where my son stayed all the time, he, he stopped burning it up.
I knew there was a personal note there somewhere.
He was always on the wall.
I have Dr. Polk, who would like to address the board.
Okay.
May it please? And if I may have Karen Cooksey as well to the podium, we would recommend this change, but we also have a recommendation for clarification, and I have asked Ms. Cooksey to present that.
Hi, good evening, board members. If you will look at, on page four of five, there are different components, and on the fifth bullet, I think there might be just a little bit of a misconception with just some wording changes. This, again, talks about the amount of time that students are physically active, so in an attempt to, to really talk about the 20 minutes, a minimum 20 minutes of recess, I think one thing that we have noticed is it really reads like almost maybe 220 minutes, and want to make sure that we're really in a line, because it's, it's noting Oklahoma State Bill 312. So if you'll, if you'll look, and it, it is reading great, but I think the 20 minutes kind of, kind of might give us the wrong indication. So with your approval, we'd like to stay consistent to how that law reads and what is already being expected based on our accreditation report, and at the end, instead of saying along with the 20-minute recess, we just need to make sure that it says 60 minutes must be in physical education. So we're not saying 120 plus then 100, but making sure that we're in a line, knowing that the recess kind of, I think, made that a little bit cloudy, that it was looking like we were adding above and beyond requirements. Again, these are all minimums, so we encourage more physical activity, but we want to make sure that we are, if we're referring to the state bill, that we're saying what the state bill 312 says. Any questions about?
No, and I brought that up to Barbara this morning, that exactly what I, what I'm meaning.
Exactly.
So I appreciate it.
No, we appreciate that, because again, the intention was we want to make sure that we know that recesses are 20 minutes, but we do not want to add more when we're referencing a state bill. So with your approval, we can, that's just a simple amendment to that wording that we can work on and make sure that's clear.
So we're not going to vote on that today? We're going to send that back and let y'all revise it?
We can do as amended. We can, please vote.
We can do as amended.
Does this replace a policy that's currently in place, or is this brand new?
The whole wellness policy?
Yeah.
No, this is, that we already have requirements, I'll let you talk about that, Mrs. Ellis.
We already have requirements in a variety of sections, but this is the one policy that ties it together, so this is a new policy altogether that ties together the requirements of the seven different sections, such as the nutrition, the physical education, and activity, and so on. So rather than have it in all of those sections to have to go find it, this particular state law required it be concise and in one particular policy. COG is new.
Okay, so are there any new changes that are coming, significant changes to food or activity in the schools this coming school year, or?
I will have Ed Services address that with you.
Okay.
Again, I didn't work on the committee for this.
We attend Colso on tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, and all new laws will be, for the upcoming school year will be presented at that time. Please note, we're running just a little behind previous years, so we need a mark in the sand to get started. If we have a change in the next three days, we'll bring it back before. This will bring us current as of today.
Got you.
Make a motion that we approve it?
Wait a minute, just one question. So my understanding is we're going to approve it today, but then y'all are going to amend that wording that you just talked about, because you want it clarified more, is that my understanding?
Well, it'll be approved as amended, so that they can change the wording.
Yes, approved as amended, so that I can go ahead and change that wording on bullet item five, I believe it is.
Okay.
And then I will send that back to you again, so that you'll be able to see it, but I would ask for approval if possible.
Yeah, that's the motion I'm making, approve with the suggested change by Ms. Cooksey.
Okay. Second, second. Call roll.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the next policy is DEAR2, the substitute salary schedule. I did present it last month, but I left some information in that was confusing with classified substitutes. Really, it clarifies that that is the salary that classified substitutes makes as its lowest salary now, but we have temporary employees that make a lower salary. The per hour wage that we're asking for is $9.21, which is an increase of $1.21 over the current lowest salary.
Any questions? Move to approve, anybody?
May for approval.
Second.
Call roll.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
On policy DNAB, again, this includes DNAB, DNABE1, which is the evaluation, DNABE2, which is the reprimanded admonishment, and DNABE3, which is the improvement plan. What we've done is looked at a plan that is very similar to our teacher evaluation system, which is a growth model. It includes all of the components that go along with the plan, so you don't have handwritten letters of admonishment or written admonishments that are on other papers, pages, and so on. In addition, this is also an electronic document, so once it's completed electronically, there is an electronic file for this, and the employee will be able to sign that electronic document. The SPPPDC has looked at this policy and has indicated that they think it's a great improvement over our checklist, which is a, the policy that is in place now, and so I'm hoping that you will approve all parts of this policy, DNAB.
Any discussions?
May for approval of all of those policies.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
And the last item I have for you is the LPS 2021 school calendar proposal. I always smile every time we get to one of these. This is version one.
I was going to say, I was looking hard too, I was trying to figure out where our
first direction was going to be.
Version one normally would have been presented to you in March, but we had some areas that needed to be discussed through S P P D C and P P D C, and before getting approval from each one of those, I was not comfortable bringing it forward to you. It has been approved by both groups, and so I present this calendar for you. If you have questions, I think I see a question, I'll be glad to.
I do. We talked a long, a while ago, maybe six months or a year ago, about the idea of trying to give Election Day, especially in big presidential election years, as a day off, as an option for a variety of reasons, to make it easier for the L P S staff to vote, and also to prevent a lot of strangers from being in our buildings. And obviously, I think 2020 is probably going to be a really big election. I'm just wondering, is that possible at all? Is that something we did or could consider doing?
If we do consider it, it changes the configuration for the 90 days in front of the winter break window.
Okay.
So there are a couple of proposals that could happen, and these are suppositions at this point. You could remove one of the days from fall break and place it in that particular date, which is not popular. I'm going to preface all of these, okay?
Yeah, okay.
You can move it from November the 11th, again, which is a district elective, which is not popular, because we live in a military community.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I will present that to you. If you want me to look further, I will, of course, do that.
So are those the only two options, is remove it from fall break or Veterans Day?
At this point, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I would impertinently be in favor of either of those, but if there's, there's another way.
So this is so we can end the semester before Christmas, right?
Yes, our policy indicates that we will end semester before winter break to, to assist in final examinations, second semester beginning after winter break, and so on. And if we move that day a day back, it's also not popular.
Yeah.
Everybody talks that week before and after Christmas.
I under, I do understand that, and I know about the popularity, but the biggest thing to me when you said that was the fact that we have a lot of strangers in our buildings with our children, and so it might be something we want to think about, we don't, you know, and do some hard thoughts on that to the next.
So the rule, though, is that you have to hit, hit those days before winter break? You don't have the entire year to make up the time and just?
According to policy, yes.
Okay, that's an L P S policy, though, that could mean?
Yes, it's an L P S policy. And to give you, for instance, a nice little story, we talked about the fact that a lot of our individuals would like to have the full week for fall break. If we add five minutes per day, which is also not popular, the most we could gain is one day per semester, so we would have to add 10 minutes per day, which would put two days in first semester in addition to what we have, but it would also not take two days away from second semester. It would add two more.
Would there be a possibility of starting school one day earlier?
Yes, it is possible to start school one day earlier.
But not more.
We start school on Friday, so that we can give our parents the weekend to complete their activities with regard to, so if we started earlier, we would start on Thursday, and we'd have children Thursday, Friday, and then move forward with the rest of the calendar year.
Do we have any idea how many of our elementars are used for holding places?
At the current time, I don't.
That might be something we can make.
It's a good question.
Because they could find another.
But I know it's not every one of our elementars.
It's Pioneer Park for sure. I'm not for sure about anything.
Is, is that something that you're aware of? We can get that.
Something you could look at, you know, maybe if there's issues with them feeling uncomfortable with that happening in the building, then maybe they need to find another building.
Okay, and please remember, this is version one. And we have a year.
Yes, that's good.
In order to work on that.
Yeah. Well, thank you for getting ahead of it, and that would just be my feedback. If there's, I mean, obviously, I would never vote for taking away Veterans Day. I think that would be a terrible idea here, and shortening fall break isn't ideal either. But if there's a different way that we could make it happen, I do think it would be beneficial, so I'll just.
I'd just say we start August 6th, what the heck, it's just one day.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
No action on this, right?
No, we have action. Yes, it's action. So.
Make a motion to approve the calendar?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Cloughbelter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Why would not let me go back?
And that ends my report.
I can't, I can't go back.
Thank you.
Oh, we have to keep going back that way? Okay, that's why I've been doing it every time.
The next item is six J, which is a proposed restructuring of Educational Services Department, and for that, we'll have Dr. Jamie Polk.
Good evening. My name's Jamie Polk, Educational Services, and with the permission of the President, I would like to allow Ms. Hatch to present. This proposal is actually obligating July 1. And out of fairness to Ed Services, I'd like for her to be the person to present, with your permission.
It's fine with me. Does anybody have a, okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brenda Hatch, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and I'll share with you that a month ago, Ed Services met, and we were selecting our theme for next year. Little did we know when we selected our theme to be Be the Change, did we know just how true Be the Change was going to be. But we selected that theme because we realized that year after year, we cannot continue to do what we've always done. And so, you know, looking forward and being progressive, we had definitely identified needs in our schools that, that we needed to be sure that we were, we were serving our principals and our teachers appropriately. If you look at a handout that I slipped under your packet, it's entitled Educational Services Restructuring Plan. Five years ago, when I took a position here at the Board as Executive Director of Elementary Education, I was a manager. I was a manager of 24 schools, and I'm going to be very honest in saying, when it came time to do those principals' evaluations, I had to send them surveys to say, have you done this? Did you do that? What happened here? Because it was not realistic for one person to be a coach and to be at the site, working with 24 different principals. As we've changed our practices in the last four years, we have become, instead of managers, we've become not only instructional leaders, but coaches for principals to help develop their leadership capacity, and to help them be better coaches as well. And so as we've, you've heard us refer to ourselves as shepherds. That's the directors and the executive directors working at the elementary, middle school, and high school. And as the shepherds have been out in the buildings, it's been very easy for us to identify that there are some gaps of support that needs to happen. Over the past four years, the principals, the teachers, and the shepherds have asked for additional support in those areas that are listed on the front page that have to do with curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Prior to now, our departments have been organized such that we are really individual silos, and that graphic at the bottom shows you a school that would have a shepherd supporting them. The stars with the S represents a shepherd that would provide support, but then in instruction or professional development was a working department on its own. The assessment department was working pretty much on its own. The curriculum department, pretty much on its own, with not that clear vision and that unified vision of working together, not the same training, not the same location, just everything together, developed a team that was not being as effective as it could be. So in January, our team met together and decided, how could we restructure part of Ed Services to be able to meet the needs? And this was based off of a, actually, the title of a book that was called Team of Teams. If you look at the second page, this is what we're proposing for restructuring. You can read this chart two ways. We're going to start by looking at it horizontally, and the first section there is Kelly Trinidad's section. Under this, Kelly would change her title to be Director of Leadership, Policy, and Governance. She would be overseeing the elementary directors, middle school, and high school directors as well. She would also oversee the Director of Special Education, which she currently does, and the Director of Federal Programs, which she currently does. But as you look horizontally across each of those directors, you can see who they're in charge of, but that would be her section. If you look at the second section there, that would be mine, with Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and this is where the change happens. In the past, we've had a curriculum team with someone in charge of assessment, someone in charge of instruction, someone in charge of curriculum. We've, we've moved in the direction of facilitators the last couple of years, but there's maybe been one facilitator for math, or one facilitator for ELA, and it's just not realistic to serve a district our size and to expect to be an expert in pre-K through 12th grade in a subject area, or to be able to go out to every school and meet their needs. So as you look at the restructuring, we're looking at an Assistant Director of Elementary, Middle, and High School, and underneath them, they would each have a facilitator of math and ELA. We all recognize that someday that we'll need to add science and social studies, but as a starting point for this team, we'll start with the two core subjects that are, that we are held accountable for the most. If you'll look at Mark Mattingly, he is the third Executive Director that is in that formula as well. A lot of his time is spent with the student services, or, yeah, the student services aspect, but if you look in that last column with high school, he plays a key role in our alternative education, and our high school counselors who are starting the ICAP program, and also with our career tech counselors. So this not only is red going horizontally, but if you look vertically, now we're looking at a team to go out and support an elementary school. We're looking at if we have a priority school or someone struggling, that we not only have the directors, we have special ed on board that's working with that team. We have our EL teachers, we have Title One, we would have our three team of the curriculum, instruction, and assessment that would all be a support team for the elementary. We've never worked together like that. We've worked individually, but we've never put it together as a team of teams. If you look on the next, on the last page, the responsibilities of the curriculum, instruction, and assessment team, 50% of their time is going to be spent working on instructional infrastructure, and that's everything from a curriculum framework, to pacing guides, to assessments, to resources, whatever it is that teachers and principals need for instruction. To be doing the data analysis, we should be handing our data to our schools. They should not be spending hours figuring out their own data. Developing professional development, attending weekly meetings with the shepherds, I can, we're so excited about this team of teams meeting together weekly to make sure that we're hearing from the shepherds at, from each side, knowing what support needs to happen, so that we can help the principals and teachers in any way that, that they need. And then the other 50% is they are actually at the school sites, providing that job embedded training. They're at faculty meetings, they're at collaboration meetings. Mary asked a great question at our last meeting when she talked about, do all the teachers, I think, believe at that point, we were talking about the quality instruction framework, and she said, do all teachers get trained on that? With a district our size, think about training 1,000 teachers. And so, you know, we've had systems in place with instructional leaders that come to training, and then the hope is that they go back and take it back to their staff, which many do, but sometimes you lose something in the, in the translation, in that message. We have teachers come in for after-school training, but they are exhausted, and our number, our attendance is low when it's an after-school training. So this is us pushing out, doing job embedded training. This is that team going out and meeting at the school sites and doing the training there. It's going to help us with some more consistent delivery of the training. They'll be on site to help coach new and struggling teachers, to support the work of the shepherds, and to support the instructional work of the principals. So now, instead of those silos being spread apart, we're looking at that next graphic there, where the schools are surrounded by the shepherds who are surrounded by that team that's giving everybody the support and working together. If you'll take a look at the bottom, the three people, I've shared Kelly's title, I've shared my title, there's a description of the things that we would be responsible for and overseeing, and then Teresa Jackson would be moving from curriculum to the Director of High Schools. There are so many things that Kelly is needing to do with the high schools that sometimes if, if you're that day-to-day, I've watched her this year between her departments and her high schools, I know that she is so anxious to go do more of a coach and a shepherd role, and to be providing that help, but she's literally just taken up with the management, the putting out fires, and I just know that she has so much more that, that she's wanting to offer and help with our high schools as well. So, questions that you might have about the restructuring, about the team of teams, about what that might look like? Yes?
Before we get started, I have some questions. This is going to be something that we're discussing in executive sessions. We just ask questions here, should we do that first, and then come back with questions?
Executive session would be my suggestion.
To do that first, and then, and then we have questions, we can come back.
I think it'd be good to ask questions in here that, for clarification.
Okay.
If the discussion should be an executive session.
Okay, so you just want clarification questions, if you have, if we don't understand the line item, and then go into more in-depth in executive session? Okay.
That's my preference.
But you got.
Brenda, how many of these are new positions?
So what's happened is, we, we did not replace Cynthia Walker. We did not replace, and Dr. Polk might have cut me out, we did not replace Fred Roloff. We've not replaced Tony Cooper's position when he left. We have not replaced Alyssa Henley when she became a, an assistant principal. Margaret Plouffe went back to the classroom in January.
Excuse me, I wanted to interrupt, but that wasn't the question. The question is how many are new, new, not how many have we replaced. Is it?
They're all going to be new.
They're all going to be new.
They're all new hires, but it's, I believe, two new.
Now, all of the ones that you just mentioned, Cynthia Walker, Tony Cooper, they all just left now, so we've been, we've been working with them up until?
No, no, those were ones that, whose jobs had been, but this year, we lost Fred, and Cynthia, and Alyssa, and Margaret.
So we haven't operated without them yet.
Correct.
But I'm saying, like, so they just left. They finished out this four years.
Some have been gone since January, and some are leaving now. Alyssa was at the beginning of the year.
As of right today, how many of these are positions that we have not had in the past?
Right. New.
Because it's a total restructure, those haven't been.
I know they don't coincide.
Right.
But they're all new positions, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And are we, we looking to hire from our, from, from where? From outside, from the teacher pool?
It's a combination.
Okay.
So these will be put out for, we'll, we'll list the job titles and?
Yes, ma'am, and, and we're ready. Those, actually, those decision sheets have been turned in and waiting your approval.
Before we voted on this, they went out?
Yes, ma'am, and the reason being, because we were under the impression they were replacements. The difference is, we didn't replace executive director title, we replaced assistant directors, which were two levels down. We needed the people, but we didn't replace it, that high-dollar salary. And so, we put them out, and from my recollection, we were to do this presentation two board meetings ago, it got full, then we didn't need to do it, and then now we're doing it, so that we can ensure you all understood exactly what we were doing.
I was going to say, the financial impact is, is low. How many of these positions that you're going to recommend to us are from L P S that are now principals or teachers?
The, on the assistant directors, it's?
I will, I will be able to tell you that in executive session exactly.
Okay, great, thank you.
I didn't want to, I was going through names, I didn't want to say all of them.
I'll be able to tell you exactly in executive session.
Thank you.
You guys will be around if we have.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions anybody has for?
Not right now.
Okay, it's just informational, so we'll.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Item 6K. This is a proposal to partner with Oklahoma Sports Network for live streaming L P S athletic events for 2019, 2020. This is a two-year contract, and Mr. Gary Dees has this.
Good evening, board members. My name is Gary Dees, and I'm the Director of Athletics. I'm here to speak today about live streaming of our athletic events. About a month ago, we put out an R F P, it was probably a little over a month ago, to anybody we thought would be interested. We received one back, it was from OSN. This is the same company we've partnered with the last three years. You should have a proposal that's in your notes there. You can see their level of commitment of games that they will stream for us, and also their commitment financial-wise. So with that being said, we would like to continue our partnership with OSN, and I recommend that the board votes to approve that proposal.
What changed in the contract?
I got the contract from last year, and the one, and I can bring it to you and let you look at it, but really, it's just numbers and dates.
Yeah, there was no changes.
Well, my question is, and Jason here, I know, so he can answer it, too, if he needs to. I just want to be sure, you know, this year, we, we did some of the little stuff on our own, anything that OSN didn't want to do.
Yeah.
And I want to be sure that can continue, because our students are really enjoying that. And of course, it makes Jason people to hire later on, because they're getting some experience. But as long as we can continue to do whatever they don't want to do, I mean, we want them to do what they want to do. They've done an excellent job, and we really, you know, appreciate what you all have done all year. But I just want to be sure that they're still allowed to do our student-led covering of some of the events that OSN doesn't want to do.
That would definitely be something we would have to work with Jay. I mean, we talked about a partnership on how we would work that, but that's definitely something we would work through with, with Jay on that.
But this doesn't keep us from doing that.
You know?
As long as it's the same contract we've always had.
And this, Ms. Nywer asked me this question earlier, to compare them side by side to see if there were any differences in the language between this year and last year. The only differences I found were on, let me get to the right window here, my apology. There were a couple different changes that I want to answer your question, Ms. Nywer. Sorry, I'm getting there. On the second line immediately, or the first line immediately ended broadcast agreement terms, there are two changes. The difference being the addition of the word exclusive to the first line. That was not there in last year's contract.
Could I see a copy of last year's contract while he's doing that?
And again, these are just Ms. Nywer's questions.
Yeah, and the word exclusive was.
Was not in last year.
Why I asked the question.
And the amount changed, and then the only other difference, it's 3333. plus two, as opposed to two thousand, which is an increase. And then the last thing would be, there's no attachment on item nineteen of the network games or the games documented and attached. Last year, there was an attached document which outlined which games would be covered. So those are the only three differences I could find in my analysis.
And the games that would be covered would be in the proposal, I didn't...
Right.
It's in the proposal.
Yeah, it's in the proposal, yeah.
Does it reference that in the contract, that as documented in the proposal, this is what we're agreeing to, just so there's no confusion later, or?
Yes, it is.
Item nineteen references that.
Okay. And then, who, I just, who owns this content? Does OSN own their own content that they are producing, or does LPS own the content, or is that, that fine?
OSN would be their company, and they own that, but it's our games and our live stream there. I think it's item...
Yep, twenty, I think.
That says that they have to delete their archive on a certain day.
Yeah, it's number eighteen.
So what does the word exclusive mean? That's, I guess, is my question.
The word exclusive...
Well, we have talked about that, and, and that's kind of...
Can we ask that question? My thought on this, as I read through it, was, I mean, the word exclusive meant that we wouldn't be streaming at the same time they were, was my interpretation. And if they weren't having any streaming at an event or a game, then they wouldn't have any rights to it. Am I wrong, do you think?
That's kind of a Chuck question, probably.
Yeah, and when we talked with OSN, we had a meeting with OSN, they preferred to partner and work with those kids, and I think that Lynn wanted to be the one to work with those kids, so there was a little bit of, you know, work through there, so, I don't know, just to be up to OSN if they would allow that to happen.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Essentially, you're giving OSN the right to determine what they're going to allow the students to do and what they can and cannot do, because you're giving them the exclusive right to broadcast all our games.
The ones that they had put on their proposal.
So why couldn't it read more to the fact that anything not covered by OSN is our choice?
Well, I think that's inferred, no matter...
That's what I'd prefer, anyway.
So he's saying that's our...
Yeah, I mean, I understand it that way, I mean...
Jay, is that how you understand it? You're the boss man.
Can we, is it okay if we have...
Sure.
They can do whatever they want.
Okay, yes, please, Jay.
Come on, Jay.
I, I thank you very much for, for just even giving us consideration, but we have been proud, because this was our first broadcasting location, and I'm a Long Public School kid, so I get it, as most people in here are, but...
They're a great colony, too.
Yeah, it's, I promise you that, you know, we're not going to do anything, and I've talked with Lynn, and as well as with Gary, we had a meeting, and do I agree with the fact that I'm paying ten thousand dollars...
Right.
Basically, for the rights to broadcast whatever varsity sport I want. Now, anything other than varsity, I don't care. If it's JV, if it's junior high, if it's whatever, and I've spoken to Lynn about this, if that's what, where the training needs to happen, I'm fine, you know, I'm good with that. We want to train. Now, when we started here, it was kind of a, we trained a few kids, you know, we started out with a few kids. Now it's become a complete program for us. We now have twelve different schools that we broadcast. We just have, just got Carl Albert, Midwest City, Dell City, Newcastle, Altus, we have Duncan, Dr. Dean, and we have, so we have a lot of great relationships. And, but what we've realized is, these kids need a place to learn how to do this, and to do it on-air with professionals. I don't mean this in any way, and she knows this, is what I'm trying to say, but it's, it's the on-air people that know about that sport. And to set a kid in front of a microphone and say, "Talk about baseball," for nine innings that has no idea about baseball, or seven innings, or softball, or, you know, volleyball, our volleyball person is an OU graduate, graduated, you know, with volleyball experience, these are not easy things to do. I can't imagine not knowing football and talking about football. And so, and I also think there's a risk sometimes putting kids on live stream, you can't bring it back. There's no delay. And so, you know, to me, it becomes also, there's a risk there. We have a million-dollar policy that Chuck made me get a few years ago, to protect, to protect the school system. And, and I think that's a good thing, I really do. But we, we want those kids to be, you know, producing, and learning how to make commercials, and learning how to run cameras, and get paid for it, and be part of our teams, and travel with us. And also, to be able to go, and I, me and Lynn talked about this, maybe we would do some junior high games this year, take those kids, put them in the booth, and let them be the voice. Let them broadcast.
That'd be awesome.
I think that's a lot better solution than just sticking them out there and hoping for the best. And, and, you know, the problem this year was, nobody, we didn't know anything about you streaming anything. We were never told anything. We were never told you were streaming, we were never told you watch games, we were never asked, we were never, there was nothing, there was no communication, none. And so our communication now with Lynn and with Gary was, we will communicate every single time, because we were all showing up at times at the same games. And it became very confusing for the kids and for us. And so, we don't want that. We want to be a partner. We, we streamed two-hundred-and-sixty events this year with a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand viewers. Twenty-something thousand of those viewers were people that went on-demand and looked at it, because they don't, most of them, I'm imagining, are military, and Kern King can tell you how many people talk about it, about seeing our streams from all across the world, because they're not here, and we're a military community. So, that's the rub, really, is, you know, is, what events, should it be varsity, should it be, let's train them at an event where, it's not Lawton High and MacArthur, or Lawton High and Eisenhower, that's not the greatest place to be training during a football game or a baseball game, or, because kids get excited. I did too, it was my school. And so, you know, again, we just weren't involved in that process, so I will work with Lynn in any way, she knows that, and we've had a great relationship as well with Gary.
So, I personally, and thank you so much, I think what you guys do from a service standpoint and a quality standpoint is outstanding, and it's, I think, a great benefit to our district to have you. Does the contract as it stands right now, do we feel like this is a win-win, and we're in the right place now, and we've worked through all, because I know this past year, I think what Lynn and her team is doing is great as well. I think giving the kids, my own kids are wanting to get experience in these kinds of things, and they're, you know, coming up the ranks, so I think that, obviously, there's plenty of room for everybody to play in the sandbox. So has, does this, has this been resolved at this point?
Well, we wanted the exclusive part in there again, which used to be in there before.
Okay.
We wanted exclusive, because we wanted to be able to say, we don't want that same thing to happen again.
Got you, right.
And, you know, God willing, me and Lynn are going to be here later on, but I don't know, I might get run by a bus tomorrow. You know, I just don't know, but, you know, so I need it to be where it's a business, and, and I have to sell advertising to be able to pay you ten thousand dollars, and, you know, it's just one of those things, and how do I know if I don't know what games, and games are canceled and pushed around a lot, especially baseball, softball, we're constantly moving games around. It's very difficult. Now, me and Lynn will work very hard, and I don't think we're going to have an issue. I just don't. But I thought the contract language was right, and fair to OSN, as well as fair to Long Public Schools.
And Chuck, have you looked at the contract? Do you agree it's good for LPS?
The original draft a couple of years ago is what I, what I produced, so I, yeah, I think it's...
You've seen it a few times.
It's, it's basic, it gets down to just the mercs and bolts there, and it's very, very easy to understand.
I mean, there's so much benefit. I mean, this is, it's amazing, and as, as a grandparent that now has grandkids in two or different places, when they get big enough to play, I hope that that area has the same service. It's just wonderful.
Jay may not want to go to Canada.
I'm not saying Jay, but I'm saying somebody in Canada might do it.
Can we hear from Lynn on this?
I don't know why we need to hear from Lynn.
Well, I just want to make sure.
The board couldn't engage anyone in the ground, I think.
No, I would love, yeah, if you have any of these guys.
I think that if you give them rights, and Jay and I, if we're good, if they're not working again, I would love our kids to have the opportunity. I've already told him, we won't do football, it's too stressful for the kids. We won't do basketball, it's too stressful for the kids.
Too fast, yeah.
But there are some baseball games that OSN are not covering, even if it's varsity.
Yep.
I think they should have that opportunity, and I think Jay and I can work through that and get those schedules after we've communicated, so we're not bumping heads. That's the last thing we want our kids to do is bump heads, but, like we said, there's a lot of fun playing in the sandbox. If there are games that are not being done, then we're seeing from Jay and his team, and we work with our kids, and they can help us with the on-air training, like we discussed, then that would be a great benefit.
Sounds like a win-win.
I think it's great. And I, and I know even, you know, on the junior varsity or middle school level, those kids would love to have their team cover stuff, I mean, they, they love it, you know, so I think it's a great benefit. And I will say, I've seen your team work from behind the scenes at one of, one of the LPS events that was not sports-related, and I was so impressed with the, with just the hands-on training and stuff they were getting, so I think...
We have, we have a professional guy, you know, and we talk to Jay, and Jay, the on-air sports part is the part that we ask them to help us with, but everything else, we have our own background knowledge.
Your own background. Your team is great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
I'd like you to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Any more questions or discussions?
Leave for approval.
Second.
Call well.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Clodkelter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyworth.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jester.
Yes.
I just can't believe we have to keep going backwards. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dees.
All right, let me get back down to where we are. This is craziness.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, next one is transportation. J I, or six I?
I'm in the same position you are, I'm catching up to.
I know, exactly.
Item six I, proposed, oh, six, sorry, my screen is bouncing for me. Item six I, proposed change of school start times for 2019, 2020, and this is transportation, Mr. Cook.
I'm Trey Cook, Director of Transportation, and what you have before you is a proposed schedule change for 2019, 2020 school year. A few months ago, I spoke to you on an information item, kind of telling you the path that we were taking to look at some different things to help with our busing issues, what has been put forward through committee meetings, through collaboration with Ed Service, through information obtained. We've put together a equitable schedule that will, at the end of the day, give fifteen minutes in between, an additional fifteen minutes between the middle school and the elementary for the AM and PM. What this does, what this does, and through, through our data collection, which we only had our GPSs through, through April ninth, but through that and through the end of May, we were able to track seven-hundred-and-ten buses on AM schedule that were late, and a thousand-and-three buses on the PM schedule that were late. With this addition of the fifteen minutes, that would take out about, that would take out about ninety-six percent of the AM late buses, okay? It would take out about eighty-six percent of the PM late buses. Now, there's still going to be a few buses that are late that fall outside of that fifteen. Now, and this data is just based on status quo, so as long as we can start the year next year with a semblance of drivers that we have now, I, I think the, the information stays true. So, that is what has been put before you. It has been a, it has been an interesting journey with this, there's a lot of, there's a lot of opinions based on this, because when you start looking at changing schedules, the times doesn't sound like a whole lot, ten minutes here, five minutes there, ten minutes there, but it's what people's lives are based upon now, how their, how their schedules, their routines are. So, it's, it's something that we don't take lightly, but looking at it for this following year, for nineteen-twenty, this is, the proposal has been brought forward.
Questions?
Well, I went to the administrators' meeting last Thursday and heard quite a bit about this.
True.
And I was going to ask Jamie or Brenda, somebody, you want to tell us what's happened since that meeting, and, because I know the elementary side of this question, they were, they had some real concerns.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for joining me for lunch on that day. When it happened, from my understanding, once he met, he had a follow-up meeting with the principals on Friday, next day, nine AM. What's most important is to note, this is not the best plan, but they feel they need a plan. And from my understanding, being in the room, the building principals are willing to lean this way for one year, with the recollection that something else will be taking place, because they understand if they do nothing, then this problem is only going to magnify itself. And they're willing to try the movement here, but to continue to be at the table. But I want everyone to realize, this is not a good situation, and people are very reluctant, but they realize that we have to come together as a team and make a hard decision, and this is hard.
I agree.
Ma'am, temporary was...
Okay, this is, this is the thing, and this has been my big hang-up on it. We see buses, or I do, every single day, when I go to work, and I go to work between seven and seven-thirty, and we have buses that are parked all over town, not going anywhere. Why can we not eliminate that and just have them go straight from that, where they were? Why do they not just go on to the next stop? Why are, I mean, there's at least two on Castro, there's three over where Hastings used to be, there's, you know?
Sure, sure. Well, the routing system, there's, there's a certain amount of time that you can pick up kids, and there's a certain amount of time that you can drop them off at the schools. So, in between, in between some routes, you're going to have a few minutes of downtime, you're going to have a few minutes where they're going to be sitting, because they can't go at, for example, eight-fifteen if it's, if it's eight-oh-eight. They've got to give the time, because if not, we create another problem, we're missing kids, because we start running a route too early.
Okay, but we have both, we have all these people that weren't being picked up on time. I mean, that was the whole problem, we had elementary kids that are sitting there for thirty minutes waiting.
Sure, but it, and, you're, you're talking about two buses out of seventy-five.
No, I'm talking about, I'm not, I'm talking about buses on, I personally see those, there's other people that see other ones.
And, without knowing the exact numbers of them, I, it's hard for me to answer it, but what, what we get into is, in between each level, there's a certain amount of time that they can start there, okay? Some days, some days there's going to be a little bit more, some days there might not be any, because that's the, how we're going to have to set these things up. If you're talking about at times when you have special needs routes, if you're missing two students, you've probably got twelve minutes that day. So, there's, without knowing the actual bus numbers, it's hard for me to give you a definitive answer, but everything is set up where we're going to have some buses at times that are waiting to be able to go to our, to their, to get to their next stops. We're also going to have buses that are not going, you're not going to see, that are still, still picking up students when they should be starting on their next route, and that's when we start having these late buses, okay? I do, I do want you to look at something on this schedule, just explain to you the concern that's here. If you'll look from seven-forty-five, our current schedule, seven-forty-five to eight-thirty, that's forty-five minutes, okay? That is when, that is the forty-five minutes that is used to pick up middle school students, okay? If you'll move over to the PM, and when they get out, it's three-fifteen, and if you'll look, those same students that took forty-five minutes to be picked up in the morning and gotten to school on time, there's an allotment of thirty minutes there to deliver those and to get to an elementary. That's where this magic number of fifteen minutes comes from. With the, with, and, and this, this is a twofold system. The transportation part of it, with the fifteen minutes and with the schedule here, going forward, you can put any, any level that you want, first, second, or third. It's not going to matter the timeframe. Now, one of the things I, I, I think safety-wise is moving elementary to the, to the top, okay? That is what was been brought up, that was what was talked about, that was what seemed to be favorable when I last spoke here. But, the thing that's going to happen there is, it's going to be, it's going to have to start being looked at through the educational aspect of it, because learning tendencies, learning times, those things. They're all going to be basically on the same playing field. Now, I will reiterate, I do think, at the end of the day, if that's something we move forward with this, the twofold part of this, that I do think that elementary does have a place just for the safety reasons. And that's based on, if they're the first in the AM, first in the PM, there is absolutely no reason that they should not be picked up on time each day. That falls into supervision, which is something that has been brought up quite often. So there's, there's things to the system. Once again, it's, it, it's, it is, it is tough. Change is tough for a lot of people. It's tough, it's tough for my department also. But I know what we have, and I'm not comfortable going forward without us making some changes. Because we're not, we're not going to be able to ever accommodate forty-five minutes pickup, thirty-minute drop-offs to get to another school. It's just not feasible. It's, it's a losing battle on our end. So I, this is what I have forward. We've, we've worked with, we worked with Ed Services, tried to put something that was equitable, that would work for all levels, and that's what I have before you.
I have a question. Go ahead. Okay. So for starters, can you help me understand, this is a temporary, you're asking for a temporary, one-year solution? And in that year, am I understanding correctly, that we are going to solve this problem a different way? I mean, we all understand, to Dr. Polk's point, this is not a good plan at all. Nobody's happy about this. It's too late for elementary, it's way too early for high school, it's a problem. So are you asking for a year to fix this a different way? Or are we looking at, are we just saying, well, let's go ahead and approve this for this year, and then it's probably going to be the same for next year?
What I'm looking at is through this year, to see if this, if this does take some pressure off transportation. If it does, if, if the numbers hold true, and we get to the point where there's only two to three percent buses late in AM, I think that's something that we can all live with. I mean, it's a hundred percent is a goal, but I think if we get up to ninety-six, ninety-seven percent, I think, and the PM, I think it's going to, it's going to help tremendously. It's going to help tremendously. Because right now, going forward, we're going to have, we're going to have late buses next year if we do not make some type of change. It's the, it boils down to, it's the amount of late buses.
No, we, yeah, and I think we all understand that. And can you help us paint, paint the picture of what the, what the core of that problem is? That you've got, what, students standing outside unsupervised for extended periods of time, and it's a safety issue?
Sure, sure, all of those. We have, when, we have, when you have less bus drivers, we still have the same-sized districts. So routes are breaking up by vicinity, by areas. So when those, when we lose drivers, we don't have people to come in and step in for those. So what those, those are combined. So we have one that, just for example, that goes six square blocks to nine square blocks. That all equals time, and that's what we run into. The root of all of this, the root of all of this is a lack of drivers. That is a fact. And we've, we've, we, we understand that, but realistically, are we going to be able to put twelve to fourteen drivers on staff by August tenth? I'm an optimistic person, but I, I think it'd be a tall task for LPS. What we can do, there's, there's very few things that, there's very few things that are constants in schools, but the time the bell rings every day is one of them. And if we can look at adjustment of those, the reason that I'm telling you for a year is because if it doesn't work, and we don't see any change, it's an easy fix to go back to it. It is. It's, it's a time change. But if we don't give it some time to be able to look at it, we have what we have.
So we're looking at implementing this on a trial basis to possibly make that the permanent? If it fixes it, and we get down to three percent late, then you're saying that this would be what we would recommend permanently?
Yes, yes, ma'am. With looking at, looking at the second part of it, which would be, which would be looking at elementary being the first tier of our busing in our school system, then you would have to look at whether, who goes next, whether it's high school.
So they would be the early ones. Elementary would be the early ones in high school.
Be the early ones. And, and a lot of that data is going to come from research just based on the learning style and, and the, the difference between elementary-aged children and high school-aged children, those things.
What, what's the norm? I mean, if we look statewide or nationally, what's the norm? Does elementary usually start earlier than high school?
They are all over the place. They're, they're all, school, school systems have all kinds of them. But there's as many, there's as many that elementary start early as there is high school start early. It's, it's, it's all over the board. There's really not a consensus to this is the one. School systems are changing, you have Norman, you have some other school systems that are, that have implemented these over, over different times in the past four or five years, so.
Is there, is there any movement towards trying to come up with a magic number at which we might gain some bus drivers?
A magic number as in?
More money.
Pay, that's usually what we get.
As in, as in pay. Yes, that is, that is something to be looked at. You know, I, I, I don't want to be negative here, but I will say that through the last year and a half, we've had about a dollar thirty, dollar forty raise through support, and it's not, we've not seen influx of drivers from that. I, I do think that is a culmination of things. I think there's things that we can look at. I do think pay is on the forefront, but I think there's, there's things that, 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 it's a process for bringing people in. It's not just us, it's not just us. Nationally, the bus drivers are down twenty percent, and it's a, it's just a, it's a, it's a tough goal, whatever district you're in, whether you need fifteen drivers or you need one driver.
What's the reason for that? Because looking at the trend line in LPS specifically from two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen, our percentage of losing drivers has escalated. So what's the reason for that?
Average age. We get, it's a niche job. You get a twelve-hour day that you work six hours.
Right.
Not everybody wants to come in and, you know, work for a few hours real early and, and then come back and, and work late.
But that's the same as it was six years ago, or eight years ago. So what I'm saying is, what has caused the escalation in the percentage of people leaving to increase?
The, one of the things that has really set districts back is the opportunities or the times it's taken to be able to pass a CDL exam. There's been some changes made to it over the last year to lessen some of it, but it is, it is, we're, you know, people are not passing it the first, the first time. And if people are not passing the second time, you know, you have people that are just not going back to take it a third time. So it, it's a culmination of everything. Like I said, I think pay is at the forefront. I do think, I do think the rigor of passing the exam is part of it, which we do offer classes, and we do a real, really good job with it, but it's still, state testing is still tough. So, did I answer your question?
Uh-huh. Not mine. I would be very much in favor of flipping the elementary first. I have very, very many concerns about moving it even ten minutes. Because then you have your late buses. We're going to have late buses, no matter what, right?
Right.
Uh, yes, ma'am, we'll have late buses.
And then we've got kids getting in really late in the afternoon. To me, you move it, your buses, I mean, we had buses thirty minutes late easily.
But I would not be better for elementary than high school. Like, why, and somebody's going to be, you know?
Well, I think elementary kids are up and ready, and, you know, to me, it would be better.
Well, and, and let me, I, and I, and I might have missed this part. You're not going to be able to flip any schedule, elementary to the front unless you change the schedule.
Right.
There's, there's no, because high school and middle school are both on the preface of forty-five minutes. Elementary on this schedule is thirty minutes. You will not be able to change any of them. That's kind of where I'm going with this. This is a twofold. If, if that is something we look forward with, to, then there's going to have to be a schedule change. Because you can't put elementary first, then put high school or middle school last, and expect them to be able to work in a thirty-minute time window. They're not set up that way. Because there's only, there's only three high schools and four middle schools, those are large areas to cover.
I also have a concern about subs. When teachers have an appointment, you know, you go to your doctor, you're lucky if you can get in at four o'clock or earlier. So I think we're going to have more people taking half-days because school's not out till later, and, you know, so we may be.
Are you saying bus drivers?
No, no, teachers.
Teachers.
Oh, I got you.
I did not.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I understand your concerns, as, as Dr. Polk alluded to, it's not an easy, easy proposal, it's not easy with change. But the, the two things that stand out, one, we can see, we can see what we have at hand. Are we comfortable moving forward with that? If not, we're going to have to make change somewhere. And change is not going to be easy for anyone, but there's been a lot of time and effort put into this. Now, I'm not telling you that everybody in the district loves this or likes this, but we're talking about tolerate. It's the fact that I know I'm going to need to change ten minutes because we're, it'll be part of the process to alleviate some of our busing issues.
Um, I have a question. How much we pay our bus drivers?
Ten seventy-three is a start-out.
At the start-out? Okay, what, what is the surrounding areas? What do they pay? Do you have any idea what that's?
They, they start, they're around twelve fifty.
Okay. Um, so, I mean, that could be a reason. I'm wondering if this is something that we could, let me do a reference. When we talked about trying to hire contractors and stuff that were in our district, we went in and looked at pay scale to see if there was some, to be able to move things up. Is that something that we could look at to see, then see if we could get extra bus drivers and stuff, and this would be a moot issue?
Yeah, I thought we, I thought we made that recommendation the last transportation discussion we had, when this, because we were alarmed at this, at the idea of this for these reasons, and we had talked about wanting to visit on that, wanting to look into that.
Right, that's what I thought.
So, yes, I would be a fan of that.
If we want to, as a district, we need a study committee as soon as possible, because you talk about flop, flip-flopping, you get into athletics and games after school.
Exactly.
And being able to go to Duncan and play. If the high schools are getting out last, the kids can't leave totally.
They have jobs.
So if someone mentions you need lights on all your baseball fields because you're playing in the dark. So I think it's Ed Services, and, I mean, everybody, athletics has got to get together and say, what's the best thing that we can do? None of it's perfect.
And I, and I think we should invest that pay scale, too.
Yeah, oh, you bet.
I mean, I mean, if we can get.
Let's be competitive in our pay.
Exactly. I mean, I wouldn't want to be here, I can go, you know, thirty-five miles to Duncan, and they're going to pay me thirteen dollars a night.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Mr. Cook, what kind of, what kind of impact?
I don't know what they're doing.
I don't either. He's a little bit of a.
Right now, we have middle school changing by five minutes, and we have elementary and high changing by ten. And we expect the impact of that to be significant. Would we still have a pretty significant, I know not as much impact, if we changed them all by five? If it was five minutes earlier on high school, five minutes later on elementary? Again, understanding, none of this is perfect, no one wants any of this. But in looking at that, what kind of impact, what percentage of lateness could we impact with that change?
And Ms. Edwards, I, I think that, the, and we've, there's, there's been several schedules, there's been several schedules that have been put out. But at the end of the day, and, and sitting, and sitting with Ed Services and business operations and, and working on this, the thing that, that came forward is, if we're going to make a change, let's make a change that is going to accomplish the goal. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable just moving five, because we've looked at that, and the fifteen minutes is something that, it, it sounds like, like a lot, but realistically, that's the time that buses are getting to schools and kids are on that schedule right now. Because kids are not getting to school, elementary kids are not getting to school till nine, nine oh five. Okay? Nine-ten, nine fifteen. They're not getting picked up from schools till four, four oh five. And as, as you said, there's, there's some four thirty, there's, there's, there's some, there's some that are, that are in those categories. So we're going to have some outliers that fall out of there. And I can't, I can't, I don't have the options to be able to fix every single thing. What I, what I do have is to be able to put something forward that is going to alleviate our problems. The AM, it's going to work wonders. The PM is something that eighty-six percent of, of correction of, of late buses is a pretty good number. It's a pretty good number. It's not as good as ninety-six percent, but it is something that we can work through. And as I said, if we get to this time next year, and you go, Mr. Cook, it did not work, then it's time for another option. We can look at what, what we gained from it. But the fact of the matter is, if we walk out of here, we know what we're going to get next year. That's, let me, let me give you, that is, in just six weeks, that is seventeen hundred and thirteen late buses. Okay? So, and, so, yes.
May I, may I ask, Mr. Cook?
Yes, please. No, 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 you go first, go ahead.
Mr. Cook, I just ask you a couple of questions. For clarification, even if we flipped the high school and elementary, which was something under consideration, but due to the short timer.
Yes.
Would there still need to be a gap increase between those two routes?
Absolutely.
So there's, there's still needed more time, even if elementary, high school?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That was my one question. So no matter what, there's still a time deficit in between the school routes. Even if we flipped the high school and elementary, they would have to add more time in there.
Yes, yes, sir. For the elementary, for, for anyone to go in the final slot, except elementary, there's going to have to be a minimum of forty-five minutes there. Because that's what they're based on now. Okay? That's what the routes are based on. And they won't work any less than that, it's just too large a coverage.
Basically, you keep the time, if, if we're going to flip them, if we're able to do that next year, or whenever, keep the, the time for the elementary can stay the same. But then you'd have to increase the space, and then increase the time for middle school and high school anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely. If, if you, if the proposal is accepted, any, any of the sites can be first, second, or third in the tier. Because the time management is there.
Yeah.
What, by contract, when do our teachers leave the buildings? Our elementary teachers? That's another thing that's, gets into all this. I mean, supervision, I know they're showing up way too early at elementary schools because the parents are going to work and they're dropping them off and calling them to sit on the porch.
Well, that's the other thing, yeah.
So what time in the afternoon do they leave?
If I can address that, I didn't bring, I'm not bringing the time schedule with me, but our contract base says that they will begin fifteen or thirty minutes earlier up to the discretion of the building principal, and they will end the other fifteen or thirty minutes later. So there are certain times when our certified staff is supposed to, for example, if the schedule says that school starts at seven thirty, then the certified staff will expect to be there at seven fifteen or at seven o'clock, depending on the administration for that building. And if they're supposed to end at three thirty, then that day would be three thirty to three fif, three forty-five or three thirty to four o'clock. You have that forty-five minutes where you can put the fifteen thirty in either direction for that particular school to work.
So it's not a specific time in the contract, it's so many minutes after the end of school?
That's correct.
Okay. I wanted to be sure of that.
So we could potentially have schools, the teachers required to work thirty additional minutes a day, Barbara, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that if you have a school day from, if I could be more precise, precise, that would work, from eight thirty until two.
Right.
The certified staff day is either thirty or fifteen minutes before, and usually for most schools, it's fifteen minutes before unless there's a staff meeting.
Sure, sure. I mean, I get that.
Or fifteen or thirty minutes after the end of that student day.
But that's not my question. My question is, are all the schools running on the same fifteen or thirty? I mean, I could, as a building administrator, could decide, I want my people thirty minutes early?
Yes.
And somebody else could decide fifteen minutes early and fifteen minutes late?
Yes.
Yes.
But that's not changing, right? I mean, that's. No, that's not changing. And, and that's also been a part of how many of our schools, if I'm saying this correctly, have worked this now. Because they have some of their staff coming in for that fifteen minutes early, but they staff coming in for that fifteen minutes early, but they have others coming in thirty minutes early to help with the supervision, and the same thing is true on the other end. So, they have the wherewithal to be able to move that time for their staffs in order to care for supervision of children.
So, was this whole issue addressed at a meeting you said you were at recently, and all the principals and everybody had a chance to have their voices heard?
You know, they've been talking for the whole semester, I think, having things-
Months. And on Thursday, a collaborated, this schedule was presented to that group, and it was a schedule that they hadn't seen before, because we had difficulties with the first three schedules that we presented. One from the board, saying that it was definitely too early, two from the group, because we had added the same number of minutes in the school day for all levels, and then the other one had to do with the times not configured to leave the fifteen minutes in between, the fifteen additional minutes in between middle school and high school. So, this is a probably fourth configuration at this point. On Friday, there was another meeting of all principals who wanted to have a voice in this, to help them to understand, just as we've tried to explain, why there are some buses that might be sitting at a spot, and they can't go to a new spot yet, because they can't drop the kids off earlier, or school's not out, and they can't go to the building and pick up those kids earlier, because they finished their route just a few minutes before time, but they have to stay there, because they can't do the other. Um, this is not across the board, and every time Mr. Cook notices that there is a bus that is in a position for a length of time that is not within the geo-fencing of a school, then he looks at rearranging that bus's schedule, so that he can expand that schedule, so that there is no wait time or sit time. So, they're looking at all of that with the documentation and technology that we have. At this particular point, we know that there's very few that are sitting, but those that are sitting may be constant, as Mrs. Claude Felter has mentioned, but it's not all of our buses that are sitting and waiting. It's just for that window of time, that they can't go pick up that next group, because the bus stops are not arranged in that timeframe, or because they can't stop school to get a load of children to take them home.
So, how did that meeting end on Friday? I mean, the two, all the principals who wanted to had a voice in this. They got to see this schedule?
At, at the end of the meeting, which lasted approximately two hours-
Yep.
All of the principals did agree that something had to be done, whether they liked what was proposed or not, and there was no new proposal submitted.
Okay.
So, for consensus, we, we got the head nods and the thumbs up and that kind of thing, and the grumbles as well.
But no vote on that?
No vote, just a consensus.
Um, can I interrupt y'all for a minute? Dr. Diggin had, you, Dr. Diggin had a second question that he hasn't got to ask.
I had a couple more. My other question is, and I'm not sure if the board realizes this, but the year before last, we got a, was it OCR complaint?
Yes.
By special ed, because we had students on special ed routes that are arriving late, which is a civil rights issue, which Mr. Sharkey has waded neck deep in, and we had to actually change some of our practices. The concern, one of the further concerns driving this is, if we have, which, Mr. Cook, no, we have, how many special ed routes do we have?
Uh, four, two, three, somewhere.
A lot of, a lot of times, the students that are late are special ed students. If we continue to knowingly know that our, we have, if we know that we have students that are arriving late that are special ed students, and we don't address it after the previous OCR complaint, and we have it repeat next year, the district will not have much of a leg to stand on if we don't adjust something. So, the consensus that we have to do something, the consensus that this is not perfect, I think everybody agrees, but I just want to make sure there is a little bit extra sense of urgency to make this happen, because we do not want to have a special ed OCR complaint on the district, because when that happens, they tell us what to do, and we don't have a choice. As long as they know we're adjusting as we go, and the gaps to try to address it, they will be more flexible to deal with us. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Sharkey?
I think we're getting five, new, five new buses are all have lifts to do that.
Yeah, so that'll help speed things up. So, the option to do nothing rests on some of those issues, and like they said, the principals, I think Ms. Ellis said there were four proposals. I, I bet there were probably dozens shouted out at one point or another. And one thing the committee did recommend early on was, they want to, they would like the district to explore flipping this elementary and the high schools, but then we run into the fact that, um, right at this moment, the football fields don't have lights, and during the fall, once the time changes, we have football teams practicing that wouldn't have lights.
The year is long enough to do that, isn't it?
Right, so there are a lot of more complications to that. So, as a gap, stopgap measure, this is-
A compromise.
Yeah, we've got to be able to show the Office of Civil Rights that we're doing something, because we do have parents, and I could list them, that have said, if you don't fix this, we're going and we're doing an OCR complaint. That's a reality, and that's something I think maybe just, just the board can understand. When, when OCR gets involved, it's pretty serious. And so, we do, if we knowingly know we have, and so I do applaud the principals and Mr. Cook, and everybody working through this in a collaborative way, but there's just no good solution at the moment.
What were you going to say, Dr. Diggin?
That's what I'm saying, and I have not heard it said here, and I'm thankful that there are a couple of principals in the audience that were there on that day. One of the reasons they were even willing to go with this is if they compensated the teachers for staying late. That had to be part of, and of course, he, he didn't bring that up, but please know, when we ask people to stay with the students, the principals were more so saying, please compensate our teachers. They can stay, but sometimes there's more students than for the amount of teacher supervision, and so if you do this, please do not forget that those who are supervising should be compensated for their time being there. And so, I, that is how the principals are saying, okay, we'll work with this, but that compromise was do not forget those who are doing that additional supervision.
And how are we going to do that?
So, that will happen.
We have a plan to work through that. We're not ready to present that plan-
That you're working on that.
But we do have two areas that we're looking at, and it will be formalized very soon.
And that's before and after school? I know there's-
That's before and after.
I have one more question. Anybody else have a question before I do? Nobody? Okay, um, this is from Dr. Barbara Ellis. Uh, what would be the detriment if we wanted to look at raising up the, you know, the pay for the bus drivers, giving, and seeing if we get additional bus drivers? What is the detriment of waiting a little bit longer and not approving this today, and, and seeing if we can get that adjustment?
In my personal opinion, I don't think we're going to be able to attract and train fifteen bus drivers between now and August.
Okay.
I do think there's a possibility to do that, some of that during the coming year with the pay in place-
Right.
But the promise of, I don't think allows for that. And the other proposals that we have, that we are trying to bring forward, have been promoted. They just haven't been formalized. Uh, we have a proposal in HR now to raise the driver salary to approximately twelve dollars, but that will shift all driver salaries. Please understand, we can't raise one without raising all.
Yep.
And we've calculated that amount of funding that it will cost to do that. So, that will come back to you as soon as we have that configured properly. The second is that we've talked about absorbing some of the cost of the licensure, the training, because there is a cost to that. And as Mr. Cook has stated, some people will take it one time, and it's bad enough when you paid your money and don't pass it the first time, but when you've taken it twice and you don't pass it the second time, it makes it definitely hard to come back again to try to do it, for whatever reason, when you're making that amount of salary.
Right.
So, if we can give some incentive for coming in for the training, even if it is proposing that the payment for the training be taken later after you've signed the contract. The third that we've proposed is the possibility of ensuring that we have our drivers on contract with incentives after six months, or after the first semester, and after the second semester. So, there are three proposals that are out there. Three of them, I believe, have gone to SPPDC, Teresa Nod, if you remember. We didn't have time to act on them, because they were presented at the end of the year. So, they will need to move forward, unless there is some fast track to get those policies proposed to you in time to get them started in August.
Okay.
And in addition, we do have a proposal from one of our departments to help with the salaries, the compensation for the extra time on the end of that day, if it's necessary.
How much is the CDF?
All said and told, it's about, uh, the class and licensure and endorsements. It's about a hundred and fifty-seven dollars, what we ask upfront for them to be able to apply to be a bus driver to LPS.
That's before they have to pay for their background check. There's just another fifty cent of dollars.
So, it's really a two hundred dollars.
It's a two hundred dollar venture for maybe, if I pass the test.
To even apply.
Sure, yes.
Well, I appreciate hearing about all of those proposals, because to me, those are a fix, not a Band-Aid, and right now, unfortunately, the schedule is, you know, it's a, it's a necessary Band-Aid, it sounds like. Um, but I, I would say, I think we have to do something. To me, my mindset is not, let's approve this and see if it works, and if so, it's going to become permanent. My mindset is, we got to do something, it sounds like, and so if this is, this is what we got to do, this is what we got to do, but it's only acceptable for a year. And in that time, we need to fix it.
This is what we're asking of you, and we, it's been just this, probably harder for us, because we know every time it's presented, it creates an open wound.
It does.
I, I do tell you that it has been a difficult.
Yeah, I've been very passionate about that. And I know, I know, we need to wrap this up and move on, but one last thing, is there, from each, all three of you, is there any question that we didn't ask that would be asked of us on this that we need to address before we go ahead and vote? Any, anything that you could think of that?
Thing you'd like to say?
Yes, go ahead.
I think it's real important that we continue to look at our partnerships in the community, and that's the LATS. LATS has even offered to be substitute drivers. Those are other avenues that just want to make sure that we exhaust all avenues, and so I just wanted to-
LATS and Port Silbo have-
LATS and Port Silbo. And so, that they're willing to use substitute drivers for us in regards of a partnership. I highly recommend looking into that in more depth.
I agree. Thank you.
Anybody, either Ms. Ellis or, or Mr. Cook, any other things you'd like to add before we?
I, I think you've been very thorough through this.
Hey, hey, I just wanted to, we're all in the opportunity to stop, to talk. I'm an equal opportunity president.
Calendars and schedules.
Uh, Doc, if you have anything before we?
No, just I commend Mr. Cook and the principals and the staff. They've worked on this tirelessly for a long time, and we kept, and they kept going back to the table until they came up with something that was passable.
Okay, do we have a proposal?
All right, I would like to make emotionally receptive.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
The, Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Uh, I guess yes.
I know, I, I mean, I don't want everybody to know this, watching, we have not taken this lightly.
Oh, my gosh.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Jester?
Yes.
May I say one thing? I think it's really important, as we made this adjustment, that we let the tech center and Cameron know immediately, because they can't really move forward until they get a word from us, I think.
You're both right on two fronts, in that they do take our students, and they work very well with us when it makes such changes, uh, but they also work with all of our surrounding sponsors as well, and so we will make sure that they are informed.
Thank you.
We appreciate your work on, on this. This is not a, to, again, to Dr. Pope's point, this is not a good solution, and, but I think for a year, it's, we all agree it's necessary, and we need to-
They get started on this fix.
Begin, starting on the fix immediately, and, and it sounds like you guys already have some good policies that will help us with that, because it's going to take time to recruit and hire, but fifteen more buys this time next year should be doable, to make the right changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you move it on? Report the superintendent?
Um, let me get down there. Um, item seven A, and this will be, really, it's a board discussion. Recommendation, selection of delegates, the OSSBA Delegate Assembly.
I'll be back.
Uh, I ask for this to be put on. We, every year, uh, there's a delegate assembly at our conference at the end of August, and we need a voting delegate to attend, and I'd like to move that Carla be our voting delegate.
A second, Doc.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item seven B, you've already acted upon, and then just item seven C, I just have two quick announcements. Um, one, um, just kind of a question, feedback. Um, OSSBA has chosen to accept two proposals for presentation next year by LPS. One was about how we did the bond, and the other was about our elementary marshals, um, the question they had. And if you all don't mind, I would let, I mean, I did the proposal. Um, even though I'll be a Duncan superintendent, I would love to come and brag on LPS and the board for all the work they've done. So, if the board, unless you have any concerns, um, I'll tell them that we'll, we'll move ahead and do that presentation. I think it's a great thing for LPS.
It's an honor to be chosen.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
That'd be great.
That'd be fun.
Okay, so you'll still let me back and brag on y'all for what you, okay. Um, second thing, um, is quick, again, um, I'll, I'll share that, but as you know, I'm on the agenda tonight, but you've read the article in the paper, and you all have had your comments, but Dr. Pope, it's been an honor.
We already beat her up.
Yes, we're, we're, it's been an honor, Dr. Pope.
Yes.
You've made my job easy.
But boy, if you got a new big job.
I've already said you're stepping, Ms. Ellis, so.
Crazy woman.
So, that's all I got.
Okay, so, um, do, okay, let's go where I'm at.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Does anybody need anything removed from the consent agenda? I do.
You guys.
I want eight G, two D.
It's the Lawton First Assembly Church event request form.
Wait, what?
Eight, it's the eight G, two D.
Two D.
Yeah, D is in David. Anything else?
Which one?
I'm sorry, I'm-
Eight G, two D, Lawton First Assembly.
Do we need anything else removed?
What about voting on, uh, employment?
That, that comes up after executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
Also, I would like to see, it's on the consent, but I'd like to see a financial report more often.
All right, we can discuss that. Does we need anything else removed before we?
Okay.
Okay, do we want to vote on the balance of the consent?
I've moved for the balance of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay, on eight G, two D, the only reason I have it removed is because it says that we are going to, um, look at, go down to, that there's an event request form, and there wasn't one, so I didn't want to vote on something we couldn't see.
The request was an online form.
Okay, so-
This was all I could download-
Okay.
From, from what they had. They say, we signed that agreement, that what you have there-
That works.
The secretary there, she said that would be sufficient, what you have.
Okay.
They're just for use in the church for the senior conference.
Okay.
Same terms of last year and all of that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great facility and a great-
Move for approval.
All right, Caldwell?
Who was second?
Uh, I was, I think.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay, let's see, we are at-
Nine.
Nine. Uh, discussion of the OSSB, I mean, yeah, OSSBA twenty nineteen six superintendent search proposal. Sorry, cut that out.
I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I spoke to them. The, the question is, is whether or not we want to, uh, in my mind, uh, I'm being presumptuous, but the question is, is whether or not we want to do any of the extra-
On the base page.
Packages, uh, the ones that, um, Ms. Hyder spoke to me about, that she, uh, suggested we might be interested in would be the marketing package, with the news releases and announcing the hire, uh, such timeline, stakeholder input opportunities, community forums, if we, if we so chose. That was an additional cost of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, you know, but we have, uh, we have a very strong marketing department, so it may not be, may not be needed. Uh, but the base salary, I think we do need, if we're going to attract some, some, uh, quality candidates. So, my recommendation is that we, we go for the, uh, the base contract.
That's mine as well, without the marketing or any other additional services.
Lynn can handle it.
And of course, we could always-
Add it later.
Add it later, if we so chose.
So, you're making a motion?
We need to, we need to get this approved, and so we get started.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Kent made the motion, who made the second? Ms. Bradley?
Oh, me.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay, now, now we're down back down here. Every time you go, you have to go back and come back down, so it makes it take us a second. We are, we need to have executive[1744.72] We are, we need to have executive session.
Yes.
Proposition executive session, we have a need for that.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session?
Second.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we've said that the executive session minutes. The Board of Education went into executive session at 6:50 PM. Members present included Carl Claude Felter, President, Pat Nywer, Vice President, Kelly Edwards, Mary Bradley, Kent Jester. Also present included Tom Deegan, Superintendent, Chuck Wade, LPS School Attorney, Dr. Tom Thomas, Community Member, entered at 8:45 PM. Items discussed included the employee promoting or receiving resignation of individual certified and support salary personnel, as listed on the certified support personnel report, posted with the agenda, posted with the agenda. Accountant, Human Resources Coordinator, Elementary Training Assistant Principal, Middle School Assistant Principal, 10-month, Elementary Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, Middle School Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, High School Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, Elementary ELA Teacher and Learning Facilitator, Middle School ELA Teaching and Learning Facilitator, Elementary Math Teaching and Learning Facilitator, Middle School Math Teaching and Learning Facilitator, Information Technology Assistant, Resignation of Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Jamie Pope, Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations or Interim, Interim Superintendent, Extra Duty Change for Chief Financial Officer, Elizabeth Brownhill. During the executive session, the board discussed these items and no other of them, and no active attention. The board returned to open session at 9:00 PM. This constitutes the minutes of the executive session. Okay.
Okay, under item 14A, Superintendent's Personnel Report, I have approval of certified support personnel report posted with the agenda.
Move for...
I'd like to call the Executive Director of Human Resources to Executive Director of Human Resources from that. Make a motion.
Not here in a second, I'll make a motion that we approve all.
So move.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
No.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Item 14B, approval of employment of accountant, and the recommendation I have in the committee is Michelle Robinson.
Does that move?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay. On item 14C, approval of employment of a Human Resources Coordinator from the Committee of Recommendation, and Ms. Catherine Trimble.
Make a motion?
Second.
Hang on. Sorry. It's always Christmas.
Mine is too.
It just is going round and round.
Yes.
Who made the motion?
I did.
I second. Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay, item 14D, approval of elementary training assistant principal. I believe there'll be no action.
I was going to make a motion to table.
I'm making a motion to table, I'm sorry.
Second.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Item 14E, approval of employment of Middle School Assistant Principal, 10-month, and the recommendation of the committee is Starla Reed-Herbig.
Move for approval.
Hang on. I'm sorry.
They're in a way asleep during executive session.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We understand. We've talked about this the whole time, we all have been in there. Okay, the 10-month middle...
Middle School Assistant Principal. Is that a motion?
I moved, and she seconded.
Caldwell?
Who seconded?
I, Kelly.
Kelly, okay. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay. On items 14F through items 14L, I believe...
First one instead of the second.
The board, there's a...
As a statement? Yes, we, um, yes, we have a statement in regards to this. We're going to, how, are, do we have to make a motion first, or some type of...
I believe you're going to, are you going to act all of them, one motion?
One motion.
And I don't know what that motion's going to be, but you have...
We do have to make a motion before we move the statement.
Motion to table?
Okay, you're going to motion table.
Is that what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
And again, that will be item 14F through 14L, a motion to table.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll swing.
Okay.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
And I have a statement to read in regards to tabling this issue. In order to make sure we make the best decisions for the district at this time, we have decided to table this until we have an interim leadership team in place, and until we get more information from key stakeholders. We will be having a workshop in July where everyone can get their questions answered, and everyone's input can be heard. It will be an open session with the Board of Education, Educational Services, and Principals at a minimum. As a board, we ask for and appreciate your patience and trust during this time of transition. We are excited about our district's future and believe in the people we have here at LPS. We know you are the most, you are not going to understand or agree with every decision we make, but please rest assured, we, uh, we are doing our best to make decisions that benefit every child, uh, of staff member in LPS. You all at LPS work so hard, and we all want you to know that we appreciate you. And even when we have to ask a lot of questions, it's because we all want the same thing, and that's to have the best, strongest district possible. Okay.
I think we're on item 14M now, right?
I think so.
Item, approval of employment of Information Technology Assistant, the recommendation I have is Dr. Regina Deloche.
Move for approval.
Second. Oh, you can do that, go ahead.
Yeah, you can.
I can do it. I'm just usually...
Caldwell?
Caldwell.
Ms. Bradley?
No.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
On item 14N, I have consideration action regarding the replacement of Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. I do not believe there's any action.
I have...
No.
Will I read the statement at the end? Are you going to read this?
Is that...
I have a statement.
Baby's statement? Oh, you wrote one, okay.
Yes, I have.
I thought I was going to...
Okay.
Statement from the Lawton Board of Education, last week, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Jamie Pope, submitted a letter, letter of resignation to the board effective June 28th, 2019. Tonight, the board has accepted her resignation. Over the past 25 years, her vision and leadership has guided our district to ensure every student had the opportunity to succeed every day, regardless of obstacles faced. The Board of Education wishes to congratulate Dr. Pope for being selected as the new, can I, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education for Oklahoma City Public Schools. We thank her for her service and dedication. We wish her all the best as she begins her new chapter, and we will continue her momentum towards a pathway to greatness for every student.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yes.
All right. I lose track. I think I'm on 14Q now.
I don't know where we are.
I'm not sure if it was made up by my alphabet.
Uh-huh.
Um, no, 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 I'm on 14P.
Yes.
No, I'm on 14O, we're on 14O. Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations or Interim?
No action.
No action? Okay. Item 14P, I'm going to pass this off to you, Madam President, approval of appointment of Interim Superintendent, approval of employment contract to be effective July 1st, 2019.
Okay, and I'm going to defer to Kent Jester.
How did you know I was going to make a motion? I move that the board approve the employment of and contract with Dr. Tom Thomas to serve as the district's interim superintendent beginning July 1st.
Second.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you so much, Tom.
Yes.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
The one with hair. What I would like, before I read item 14, are we on, are we on 14Q now?
I think so.
Before we move on to 14Q, I would like to say that I don't know anybody who has a higher, um, reputation, a, a better ability, stronger intellect, stronger work ethic, higher professional ethic than Dr. Thomas, so I think the, again, we're in good hands.
Thank you.
Lucky to have him.
No more respected educator anywhere. Item 14Q, discussion of possible action regarding the extra duty change for Chief Financial Officer, Elizabeth Brownhill.
Move for approval.
Second.
No, 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 I've got to make, read your statement. Yes, okay. Then, uh, we will make, make CFO extra duty equal to Assistant Superintendent extra duty and additional vehicle allowance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Caldwell?
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Okay, concludes my report.
All right.
Are you sure?
Yeah, where are we at? Okay, we're on the one, you are right. Okay. All right, new business. Is there any new business at this time?
Not that I can foresee.
Okay. Um, next regular board meeting date is Thursday, June 27th at 5:00 PM, in the Schubaker Center Auditorium. Are, is, will there be a need to set any new board meeting dates? And yes, and we will be getting those dates to you quickly.
We want a workshop.
We've got a workshop, and we will need a short, uh, special board meeting.
E2.
Yes. Well, the, the workshop will probably be July, but this, uh, short board meeting will be in June.
We hope.
Special, yeah. All right. Board announcements?
Board announcements, we'd like, I would like to personally thank Dr. Jamie Pope for all your many years of great service, and we're going to miss your talents, and your beauty and your grace. And Oklahoma City is very fortunate to have you.
Yes, they are. Yes.
Very fortunate.
We agree.
And I'd also like to thank Dr. Thomas for serving the community, being willing to do, come out of retirement, serve the community once again.
Okay. All right.
Dr. Thomas, I hope I'm more successful at retirement than you are. So, you keep going back to work.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Caldwell?
Uh, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywer?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
And Mr. Jester?
Yes.